Good evening, welcome to our school board meeting this evening. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and again, welcome this evening. If you're joining us for the first time, we appreciate you coming. We're going to go ahead and start off with our land acknowledgement. It's going to be read by our student board rep Sullivan.
Evergreen Public Schools resides on the traditional lands of the Chinookan peoples and the Kowalski tribe. They have lived on and cared for this land and its waterways since time immemorial. We thank them for their stewardship and make this acknowledgement to open a space of recognition, inclusion, and respect for all Indigenous students, families, and staff in our community. Thank you.
Thank you Sullivan. All right, our first order of business is to adopt this evening's agenda. We'll entertain a motion for approval.
I move to adopt tonight's agenda as presented.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, next up, we have a special performance. And I'm, is Corinne, are you going to come up and introduce our performers this evening? Thank you for being here. We always enjoy when we have a music performance at the school board meetings.
Boyd, my name's Corinne Ormsen. I am the Fine and Performing Arts Specialist. This is a string ensemble from Mountain View High School. And they are student organized and led, and their group does community outreach through music. So Jess is going to talk a little bit more about what they do and introduce their three tunes.
Hello, as she said, I'm Jess. And so with this music that we do, we go to retirement homes. And we've been doing it, or Mountain View has been doing it for the last about 15 years. We didn't during COVID. But we just love to go and play at retirement homes and spread some holiday cheer to these folks who maybe don't get to experience it as much being there with their families not always being there. And so the three pieces we are playing are Deck the Halls, Up on the Housetop, and We Wish You a Merry Christmas.
Before you go, I think, well, one, thank you very much for coming and playing for us. We really appreciate it. It was beautiful. But I wanted to kind of maybe ask a couple of questions, and maybe some of the other board members might want to ask something too. But it sounds like you're all in class together, right, during the day, maybe, I don't know, the same, the same band, class? And then just the group of you go out on your own time and then do these performances? And then you just?
So it's not just this group.
Okay.
We have signup sheets, so whoever in the orchestras wants to go and perform at retirement homes, they are free to sign up and go do so.
But this, like, but somebody here, like, Jess, I'm assuming that you're kind of the one that's like, these are the places we're going to go, who wants to come and join us? And there's a fair amount of students that participate in this?
Yes, I'm the one that has called the retirement homes and I print out the signup sheets and I make sure there's a group that is ready to go perform.
That's amazing. I appreciate that, because I know that the people in our community probably really appreciate it, especially this time of year when, you know, things sometimes really bring some cheer to people. And thank you for doing that.
I want to say that your program has a very special place in my heart, because my daughter was with you guys for four years, and I recognize pretty much all of you. You guys always do an amazing job. Could you go around and tell us your names and what you play? And what year you are?
So I'm Jess and I play violin.
I'm Amara Leth and I play violin.
I'm Neelie, I play violin.
I'm Ophelia, I play viola.
I'm Ryan, I also play viola.
I'm Kevin, and I play cello.
I'm Amelia, and I play double bass.
I seriously just appreciated the tone and the togetherness that I heard from y'all. My kids all went through orchestra, all but one was a visual artist. And it's just so nice to hear the string instruments around this time of year as well. Thank you for coming in and sharing that with us. It filled the room with a, with a real, I guess, spirit of Christmas, if you want to call it that. I appreciate it. Yeah, I closed my eyes for just a moment and imagined myself in a concert hall. It was just absolutely outstanding and beautiful. Thank you so much for sharing your joy to us and the community. We really appreciate you.
Thank you guys for coming and sharing that with us and taking time out of your evening. We appreciate you. All right, next on our agenda, very exciting evening, as we are installing our new board directors that were just voted in the most recent election. If we can call up Gary Wilson, Rob Perkins, and Jacqueline Weatherspoon to take their oath of office.
Well, it's my pleasure to, to be the, do the ceremony here to make sure that you're officially on the school board here. So we'll, what I'll do is we'll just repeat after me. I'll try to make it short and say your own name. I, and your names? Do hereby solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Washington and will faithfully discharge the duties of Director of Evergreen School District Number 114 Clark County State of Washington to the best of my ability. Congratulations, and we're excited to welcome you in officially to the school board. Welcome.
Congratulations, Gary. Congratulations, Jackie and Rob, on your reelection. All right, next, and I think that there's paperwork that we'll have to fill out, but we can do that. Okay. All right, next up on our agenda is public comments. At this time, anyone that has signed up to give public testimony can come up to the podium. So any community member wishing to address the board may do so during the designated time on the agenda for public comments. Comments are to be directed to the Board of Directors as a whole, may not be addressed to any individual member of the board, the administrative staff, or the audience. Although the board will not engage in dialogue, the board chair may ask a speaker for a qualifying question or follow-up at a later time. Each speaker has a maximum of three minutes. There is no mechanism whereby a speaker can donate some or all of their time to another speaker. No individual may speak more than once per regular meeting. And then please state your name and district affiliation, if any. And we're going to go and call people up in the order that they signed up, and then just be cognizant, we have the timer on the, on the side, so you'll see your three-minute clock. First up is Adam Aguilera. Adam, if you're here, go ahead and come on up.
Thank you, Adam Aguilera, a language arts teacher in Evergreen Public Schools. Dear Evergreen School Board and Superintendent Boyd, I would like to speak tonight on the issue of the school district potentially cutting up to $20 million from Evergreen students. It's important to remind the community that after the first levy failed in 2022, the school board made the decision to collect less in the levy, which widened our deficit by several millions of dollars. When a school district fails a levy, they just run it again and organize better. It was bad governance for the school board to take less money when it was the teachers, staff, and parents who worked so hard at the doors to convince voters not to punish the students over the school board firing and cashing out multiple bad superintendents. I would also like to remind the community that the school board and superintendent has already cut 19 million from your children last year. They've cut your librarians, counselors, athletic directors, school resource staff, overloaded your child's classroom with more students and less attention for your family, and now they're planning to cut even more educators who work directly with students. But there's one area the school district hasn't cut yet: district administration. This building is loaded with millions of public, the dollars, of public tax dollars and salaries by people who do not work directly with students at all. Why do we have a chief operations officer who makes over $245,000 a year when we already have a superintendent and associate superintendent whose job is, you know, to operate the district? Why do we have an HR department with a chief officer, a senior director, and two managers? This district office is filled with executive directors overseeing senior directors who are overseeing directors who are also overseeing managers. And our students and staff do not know them, because the work these administrators do is invisible to the daily lives and struggles our students face with less staffing and less resources. Now, there are folks who work in this district office building who do good work, and if district leadership had not brought us to a place of this financial mismanagement, I wish they could continue that good work. But I have less as a middle school teacher to give and offer to my students than when I started here in Evergreen over 15 years ago. Many folks in this building have teaching certificates and can be moved to the buildings to work directly with our students as certificated educators. This would be a more efficient use of public tax dollars in the midst of budget cuts. And I would like to offer one more suggestion to save money in the budget for Superintendent Boyd. Can you voluntarily take a pay cut? Do you really need to be making $350,000 a year when you're considering cutting the last of the food pantries on our kids? You make $150,000 more than the governor of Washington, and everyone in this room, and you and I both know that you could never look Governor Inslee in the face and say you work $150,000 harder than him. It's time for district leadership to pay for the mistakes they've made. Evergreen students and educators have already paid their fair share.
All right, next up is Margot Logan.
Good evening. I'm Margot Logan. I have my MSW in administration. I'm a former CPS investigator for DSHS. I was also a former investigator regulator for DSHS with child daycare licensing. I taught a community class for almost 10 years on recognizing and reporting child abuse. I did seven years of substitute teaching in various public schools, mostly classroom assistant, did the lunchtime and recess with kids. I also was a group, a group life counselor in a transition home for foster youth, did that for six years. And I think, I was, wanted to talk about history. And I would recommend that the board read the NEA, Trojan Horse, and American Education, and also any of the books by John Taylor Gatto. What I found in talking to teachers and various people is that teachers and other school administrators really have no idea of the history of their profession. And in order to fix some of these problems, it really, we need the historical perspective. And actually, for public, I'm first-generation German. I'm also an Army brat, so we lived in Germany for five years. And our American education system public is German. We are quite German. Kindergarten is a German word. So, and, and our system is more indoctrination than actual teaching. And as the years have gone on, more and more indoctrination has happened, and we see it all over, where we're looking at things that have nothing to do with history, or English, or literature, or philosophy, or, or science. And so I've been trying for years to get people just to read NEA and Trojan, Trojan Horse and American Education. And so if the board is not familiar with the beginning histories of public education, which started in 1854, would be really a good time. That, in terms of racism, the public school system itself is racist. It's not the individuals, it's not the kids, but the system itself is racist. And if you go back and you look at the beginning histories, starting in 1854, you'll get an idea of how that unfolded. So best of luck to you in the new year, and get some reading done.
Thank you, Margot. All right, next up is Michael Jeline, Jelineo? Jelineo? Jelineo, come on up.
Well, my name's Mike Jelineo. I'm a community member. Thank you, community and board and Superintendent Boyd. I stand here tonight with heartfelt gratitude. I extend my sincere thanks to everyone who cast their, their votes for Gary Wilson, ushering in a new era for this beloved district. Replacing a 24-year incumbent is no small feat, and your trust in Gary reflects a collective desire to change and progress in our education landscape. The school board needs a fresh perspective, a guiding force to navigate the path towards a brighter future for students of Evergreen. Over the course of five months, I dedicated myself to, to the cause of ensuring Gary, Gary's success. And tonight, I, we stand united in witnessing the fruitation of our efforts. It is with a profound sense of humility that I acknowledge the role of a higher power in this triumph. Without divine intervention, such accomplishments may seem insurmountable, but with faith, we have proven that anything is possible. As we welcome Gary to the board, we embrace someone new, a dedicated individual posed to make positive, a positive impact on the educational journey of our students. This marks a change in one of the leadership positions, but also an opportunity for collaboration and growth. I want to express my willingness to embark on this journey once again if needed, as for commitment to the betterment of education, or the Evergreens Public Schools knows no bounds. In closing, I want to convey my deepest gratitude, gratitude to each person who played a part in this journey, from the voters who believed in change, to the tireless supporters who worked alongside Gary and me. Tonight, or together, we have laid the foundation for a promising future and an excite, and I'm excited to witness the positive transformation that lie ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is James Judkins. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
My name's James L. Judkins, and I'm a former educator myself, spent 40 years doing it. And tonight, I just want to congratulate the two, the three new members on the board, and we'll be praying for you. I give out a special congratulations to Gary Wilson. This guy was just a common citizen that decided that he would take it upon himself to be elected to the school board. That ought to give us all hope as common citizens to say, hey, we can get involved and make an impact. So congratulations, Garrett, appreciate it.
Thank you, James. All right, next up is Randy Schmidt.
Hello, my name's Randy Schmidt. Thanks you for letting me speak to you tonight. I propose a new policy for the Evergreen School District. I propose that you adopt the same policy that is documented in Florida House Bill 1069. Under House Bill 1069, if a school denied, board denies parent the right to read passages from a book or a resource that would be considered harmful to minors, the school district must discontinue the use of such materials. In layman's terms, that would mean if I read page 69 from Gender Queer, or any page from All Boys Aren't Blue, and you stop me, which you should, from reading it in this room because it was extremely sexually graphic, that book would be removed from your, all, Evergreen School District schools and libraries. And then if you adopted said policy, I would, I would encourage you to avoid embarrassment future in this board meeting, to cull your libraries of these books so that we wouldn't have to bring them here and read them and embarrass everybody here by reading those passages. If you don't adopt this common sense policy, we would like to know an explanation of why it would be acceptable for any of our children to check out a book that is so pornographic in nature that it shocked people when one of our own senators read from that book, All Boys Aren't Blue, in the, in the Senate chamber. So I just ask you to take a look at that. How Florida House Bill 1069 is easily found online, and I would look at section six. Thank you much.
Thank you, Randy. All right, next up is Megan Hausinger. Hi, Megan.
Hi, my name is Megan Hausinger. I'm a para educator in the district, but I'm here as a mother to two students, Ilahi and Shaheila. In 2020, we went to remote learning for the safety of our students and staff. Why then are we not putting violent kids in alternate learning? Why are we allowing students who assault to the point of broken bones, concussions, and hospital trips stay in their school? Or once they have committed enough offenses, ship them to another school to traumatize a new set of students, as we saw last week? My second issue is equity. This district has no right to use the word equity. Getting rid of our newcomers program is quite frankly cruel. You're setting these kids up for failure. Throwing students who are brand-new to the country into gen ed classrooms with little to no language support is the opposite of equitable. I find it hard to believe that with such a bloated district office, we can't find the money to support our newcomers. And I wish our superintendent was in here to hear this, that the superintendent position makes more in one month than I do in an entire year. I would like to know how you are directly supporting our students, not just some strategic plan. The Salem-Kaiser districts are preparing for a budget cut by freezing pay for 63 senior administrators, and the superintendent is giving back $30,000 of her salary over the next two years. In case you're wondering, that would pay for my para position. That would pay for an extra ELL para. Vancouver is also preparing for cuts by starting at the district office. This board can obviously learn something. I have seen the aftermath of a district ran like this, of a superintendent like this. After the longest teacher strike in Washington State history, Marysville School District has never recovered. I graduated from there, my dad taught there during the strike. When I was an adult, I refused to buy a home in Marysville because of the schools. Districts, they cannot pass levies, they cannot pass bonds. Buildings are literally falling apart at 75 years old. Nothing can get passed. Teachers cannot get pay increases. The district has never regained the community's trust. For all these reasons, I am now actively trying to remove my kids from Evergreen schools. We are not safe, I am not safe at work, my kids are not safe at school. It is not equitable. It is not equitable for anyone involved. And I have a feeling I'm not the only person. You need to, you need to address your declining enrollment. I think there are a lot of families who are looking to stay out of this district.
Thank you, Megan. All right, next up is Jeremy Boach. Jeremy Boach? Did I say that okay?
That's Brock.
Oh, Brock.
I'm a parent of three children in this school district. I have a, a daughter at, at Riverview Elementary, a son at Shaheila. Actually, his teacher's here this evening, Mr. Aguilera. And a daughter at Union High School. And with recent events at, at the, there was a recent shooting at Evergreen High School. There was also a recent knife incident at, at Shaheila. And I am very concerned about this, this, the safety of our students. There seems to be no action from the school district as far as addressing some of the, some of these issues. There are no resource officers at the schools. And I know that there are security guards at each school right now, but I'm concerned that the safety is not, you know, the safety of our children is not being adequately taken into account. My son called me the other day during that knife incident and said, Dad, there's a kid running around the school with a knife. We're hiding in a class, I don't know what to do. I arrived at the school prior to the police getting there. It took me eight minutes to get there and the police were not there yet. Something needs to be done to protect our kids. It's their, it's our priority. Their safety is number one. And it is not being, it's not being taken care of. So I would like to be some, see something done. I know that there are budget cuts right now. And everybody's trying to find ways to, you know, cover for para educators, security, whatever else, but security should be number one. And I have a feeling that more students are going to be leaving your schools because of the lack of safety. And I just, I hope you guys take some action.
Thank you, Jeremy. All right, our last speaker signed up is Sean Gunder.
Hi, Sean. Hello, good evening. My name is Sean Gunder. I teach at Henrietta Lacks. And I wanted to take the time tonight, considering the circumstances, to remind the board that sexual health standards are harm reduction. Firstly, though, I'd like to recognize that the Washington State health standards, as they are now, are conservative and fall short of addressing the needs of our children and our community. They are designed to appease and to pass through public processes while under attack from uninformed, uninformed sensationalism, as is, has been evidenced in this very room. I'd like to further recognize that at my school, I know for a fact that the district's policies and state RCWs are not being followed in terms of the content and frequency of what's taught, and would feel safe in assuming the same for other high schools. The oversight is low, the training in and provision of curriculum is sparse, and systems weren't built to accomplish the tasks set by this board and the legislature. As an example, the seniors at the school I work at have not had any sex ed their entire time in high school due to the pandemic, and having no work done to reconcile them missing sex ed their freshman year while they should have received it two separate years. Recognizing that, I choose to address the board tonight because I do truly believe that everyone in this room is here because they care about our children and our future. And I choose to address the board tonight to restate and affirm that sexual health education is harm reduction. Gender-based violence pervades our culture and our students deserve to know how to both grow and treat others well, and to be treated well and thrive. Our children deserve to learn about bodily autonomy. Our children deserve to know how their bodies work. Our children deserve the space to be themselves. Our children deserve to be free from shame. Our children deserve to not be sexually assaulted. Our children deserve a safer world. Our children deserve healthy relationships. Our children deserve to go into the world prepared. And I'm here tonight to remind you that our children deserve more, not less. So please don't make things worse. Thank you.
All right, joining us this evening is our Clark County Auditor Gray Kimzy, who is here to do our oath of office of our newly-elected board member Gary Wilson, and our re-elected board members, Rob Perkins and Jaclyn Wetherspoon. So we're gonna do a replay.
We're gonna do a little replay. You might have noticed how awkwardly I got up to do the oath of office. I was not planning to do it. Mr. Kimzy, we're so happy to have you here to do it in the most official, and our newly-elected board members deserve that, so.
They're special, they get it twice.
They get it twice, yes.
So my comment is, out of an abundance of caution, we'll just do this again.
Does this mean we get eight years?
Uh, no, no, it does not. You might get them, but not from this. So if you want to raise your right hand, and then repeat after me and state your name after the word "I", and a little bit of test for you to remember your district number here in the middle of this oath as well. So here we go. "I".
"I".
State your name.
Benjamin Rob Perkins.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the state of Washington.
And of the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Washington.
Of the state of Washington.
And will to the best of my judgment.
And will to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly faithfully.
Truly faithfully.
Diligently.
Diligently.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties of the office of.
Perform the duties of the office of.
School Director, District Number.
School Director, District Two. Number Two.
Evergreen School District Number 114.
Evergreen School District Number 114.
In and for Clark County, Washington.
In and for Clark County, Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
Well done, thank you. Best of luck to each of you.
All right, I think we're gonna take a few moments All right, thank you very much. Congratulations again. At this time, the board will now be going into an executive session. Executive session is to review the performance of a public employee. We expect it to last about 30 minutes, and then we will resume the meeting. All right, thank you. We are back in our regular board session. Executive session has ended. At this time, we will make a motion.
I move that the board accept the recommendation of the Chief Operation Officer to terminate the employment of Karen Kirk for the reasons provided by the Chief Operations Officer, and that she provide appropriate written notice to Karen Kirk of the board's action.
Second.
This one moved in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on to the next order of business, which is our board consent agenda. We'll entertain a motion for approval.
I move approval of the board consent agenda as presented.
Moved in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And then next is our superintendent consent agenda again.
I move to approve the superintendent's consent agenda as presented.
Moved in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you. All right, next we're gonna go ahead and move on to our board reorganization. Every year, every year, election year or not, we reorganize our officers of the board. And we pick a president, vice president, and a legislative liaison for the board to represent us for the next year. So at this time, I guess I would open it up. We would probably do president first and have a discussion around it. I know that we've talked about in prior years about how we do it, rotate, give everybody an opportunity to take the leadership position. So I'll open it up for any discussion or any motions.
Per our board commitment, I would like to move to appoint Rob Perkins as board chair, president.
Okay, so what do you wanna call it? So Ginny is nominating Rob Perkins to be our board chair, and it's been seconded by Gary Wilson? Okay? Any other nominations? All right, it's been moved in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Did you accept Rob?
Oh yeah, I don't know if he has a choice. All right. Any opposed? All right, congratulations, Rob. At this point, I'm gonna turn the gavel over to President Perkins, who will then lead us with the rest of the.
Election?
Officers.
Officers.
Get the gavel.
Okay, our next item in board reorganization are nominations for Vice President of the Board. Let's open it for nominations.
I nominate Jackie Wetherspoon for Vice President.
Second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close that discussion. All in favor of Jackie Wetherspoon as Vice President for the next year?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. I, and my vote is aye. Our next position up for discussion and nomination is the board's legislative representative. We're open for nominations.
I nominate Ginny Gronwald for Legislative Liaison.
I, Ginny Gronwald has been nominated for Legislative Liaison. Do you accept the nomination? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll hold a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And so, the next item on our agenda is the superintendent report. Superintendent Boyd?
Thank you Director Perkins. And congratulations to Director Wetherspoon, Director Perkins, and Director Wilson on your newly-elected positions. Looking forward to working with you all. I want to just start by, I wanted to welcome all, you all to your new positions. I want to share that we just, and I don't want to steal all of your thunder there, Sullivan, but we had a really nice meeting with our very first student advisory council that's being led by Principal Schoonover. And part of the effort that we're making to engage students. We're also, have held our second meeting of our Evergreen Community Advisory Team, which was precipitated by the, the desires of the community for us to do deeper engagement specifically related to budgets. We had a good second meeting with them. We've met related to budget with our principals, our Evergreen Community Advisory Team. We'll be working with our students. And we're developing a stakeholder engagement plan that we should be working on over the break and have something available at the beginning of the school year to share that out widely. This week, I, the last couple of weeks, I visited Evergreen High School, Y East, Image, did a reading program at Fisher's Landing. And I'm constantly amazed by the incredible things that our teachers and students are out there doing. And boy, just listening to that orchestra today, what an amazing group of, of talented musicians. And you see that, interesting enough, replicated all throughout the district in our career and technical programs, our music, our athletics. And just proud to be leading a district with such great talent and such great people supporting that talent. Want to just share that tomorrow at our superintendent's leadership team meeting, tomorrow, we'll be discussing our upcoming, which is not this February, but the following February, upcoming tech levy, as well as our upcoming EP and O levy. So we're gonna begin some conversations to begin to think about what that could look like, bring that to the board for some talk and consideration down the road. We're already beginning to think about that and talk about that. And I wanted to share that with the board today. And we'll be bringing that to you. Really excited about the ledge priorities that the board worked so hard on through a couple of different work sessions to come up with. And we'll be doing a formal approval of that in just a minute. So that's my report, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Superintendent Boyd? Hearing none. The next item on our agenda is a teaching and learning and equity update. Superintendent Boyd?
Yeah, we've got Dr. Kimberly Armstrong coming up to tee this off, so welcome.
Good evening, welcome, thank you. Good evening, President Perkins, Board Director, Superintendent Boyd, and Student Advisor Taylor. My name is Dr. Kimberly Armstrong. I serve as Deputy Superintendent. And it is a pleasure to be before you, giving you an update under Operation Expectations, Operating Expectations 10, the learning environment, and Operating, Operational Expectation 11, the instructional program. And really, it's just a brief update to talk about what the team has been up to in regards to our new strategic plan. We are very mindful of being where we're at with the budget. And while we are actively having conversations about planning for reduction, at the same time, it's our belief and our commitment to raise achievement across the system, because we know that whatever we do, we do by design and we want our students to benefit from it. One of the things I've been excited about is we know under Goal Area 1, Culture of Safety and Belonging, all of our administrators have selected two goals this year, one under Culture of Safety and Belonging, and then another one of their choice. And so really, one of the things I'd like to uplift is just the concentrated focus on increasing student voice across the district. And when we think of our student outcome, of students feeling empowered, we think about those actions that we need to do here at the district level to create the agency for that to happen. And so. And so, what our hope is, over the next couple of weeks, is to bring back before you some measurements and some updates on how we plan to review the progress for students and, you know, academic achievement, I should say, but ultimately how our students are progressing and what we hope to see at a 30-day, 60-day, and 90-day mark and what leadership behaviors and actions you can expect from not only building leaders, but from us as central office staff. So we're super excited to layer in that piece and be able to engage around data and accountability with you. What is super exciting as well is we have Health Service Manager Kate Winters here to discuss how we support students' health. So I'm going to ask her to come up at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kate?
How do I make it just? It worked on my computer.
End the slideshow and go back to the settings that way.
Well, I am excited to be here tonight. I want to thank the board members and Superintendent Boyd for the opportunity to provide an update about health services. I also want to thank the school nurses and procedure nurses who work diligently every day to support all the students in our district. And for those of you who don't know me, I'm Kate Winters, the Health Services Manager for Evergreen Public Schools. So a little about us, excuse me, and who we serve. Health Services touches just about every aspect of the educational setting. We support all the students in our district, not just those students with health conditions, as well as things like athletics, clubs, extracurricular activities, and field trips. This year, Health Services started the year by writing a mission statement. And it states that we are a community of collaborative and unique professionals who are accountable and dedicated to promising competent, safe, inclusive leadership to our school community. There are more than 22,000 students in our district and more than 5,000 of those students have a documented health condition. Just so you realize, what I'm saying is 24% of our student body has something that they have designated in there as a health condition. Immunizations keep our students healthy. A little history about immunization. So in the early 1900s, many U.S. states began requiring specific vaccinations for students to attend school. And by 1998, every state in the nation had embraced vaccine mandates for students prior to them being able to attend school. We're very proud of how far EPS has come in the last few years. So in the 2017, 2018 school year, there were over 14,000 students that represented 56% of our student body that were considered to be out of compliance. And much of that was related to documentation requirements or simply just being under vaccinated. But we are proud to say that there are now only 232 students, or 1% of our student body, that are considered to be out of compliance. I want to thank our Health Services Compliance Clerk Danielle James, all of the nurses, the secretaries of the schools, and the building administrators for their diligence and support. We could not have done such an incredible job without such a great team. I also just want to mention that next year, the Department of Health is implementing a statewide online database called School Module. And we've begun the onboarding process, but we'll have to provide updates as we go along. Our ongoing immunization efforts, we plan to continue to host an annual back-to-school health event in mobile immunization clinic. I encourage students and families to utilize the medical clinic that's on-site at Evergreen High School. So watch for immunization clinic flyers when they come out, especially if you're having a difficult time finding an appointment with your regular provider. Let's see, we want to collaborate more with the HART program to work with students in transition. And for those of you who do not know what that is, the HART program is an acronym for Homeless Education and Resource Team. For example, their program supports the students who are underhoused or in the foster system. This slide shows the overall school health model in our district. I want to mention first, a few of our new partnerships that we have established over the last year. So Caravan Mobile Health provides a unique service and they were able to bring vaccinations to students here at the district office at the beginning of this school year. This opportunity made it possible for students who wouldn't have been able to start the first day of school to be able to do that and be on time with their peers. We've also partnered with Big Smiles Dental, which is a team of dental professionals who go out to the elementary schools and provide free dental care. SWATCH is a community-based care management company that connects families with the resources that they need and are available in our community. We have, again, we have a medical clinic at Evergreen High School that's serviced by the C Mar Medical Group to provide medical and mental health services. We have seven procedure nurses who provide all of our skilled nursing care and diabetic care to students across our district. And then we have 18 school nurses. In addition to the, excuse me, let's see. In addition to the things that I have listed here, their main focus is primarily case management and creating and implementing individualized health plans. But their day is anything but typical. They're often asked to consult on the health of students and staff who come down to the health room. They work with families, medical providers. They present health education, respond to emergencies in their buildings, and a myriad of other things that pop up during the day. The nurses that I have been given an opportunity to work with here are tremendous advocates for every human that walks through their doors. They have a wealth of knowledge and they rely, they are relied upon in their building as the medical expert. Thinking about that slide where I said that 24% of our students have a known health condition, not to mention the multiple situations they're presented with every day, I just want to acknowledge how full their roles are. And even when it's hard, they somehow support each other through it all. And they smile at the end of it and they joke. And they're an amazing team. The school nurses manage approximately 2,500 individualized health plans. And to give you an idea of the type and number of conditions that they write plans for, we have almost 90 students with diabetes, over 200 students with seizure disorders. There are about 550 students with severe allergies and 1,200 students with asthma. So this year, we began the year in our professional development week talking about how Health Services could incorporate this district's strategic plan into the work that we do. So first, we found our focus and we created a mission and vision. Then we began talking about shared governance. Before my time here at EPS, I worked at area hospitals that had been using a shared governance system as part of their model for many years. And the crucial concept of nursing shared governance is where people who do the work every day to provide the care have a vested interest in project improvements or, and streamlining processes in collaboration with their leadership. This is important because it empowers and engages nurses to promote the changes that we need to improve and standardize the care that is being delivered. So right now, we have four main areas that we're focused on and we have created committees. The diabetic committee, I will talk about in more detail next. We have a team of nurses on the forms and health database committee who are focused on updating forms, creating online forms, as well as a central health database for nurses to quickly and easily find the resources that they need. We have a team of nurses working to create standardized education for staff and students about many things like health conditions and illness prevention. And we have a team of nurses on the professional development committee to ensure that the Health Services staff are able to keep up to date on regulatory, legislative, and compliance, as well as keeping their finger on the pulse of medical advancement. So, the diabetes committee. So diabetes is a complex medical condition that affects how your body turns food into energy. And as technology advances, providing care to these students is becoming increasingly complicated and often requires monitoring. More students are getting continuous glucose monitors and insulin pumps. And the diabetic committee was formed with the idea that nurses wanted to partner with students and families to help students learn about their medical condition and to build knowledgeable, capable, and independent young adults. One of the first areas of focus that the school nurses and procedure nurses wanted to address when I met them was to improve diabetic care for the students in our district. There are four nurses who volunteered to take this project on, which is part of the initial phases of shared governance. They have designed student educational flyers that you may have seen in the health rooms or in schools about food choices and how their choices affect their health and blood sugar levels. The committee applied and received $1,500 in grant money to participate in a program called the Diabetic Book Program. And this is an age-appropriate educational series that students will receive throughout their education here at EPS. Through this program, we want to foster empowerment, self-confidence, and knowledge of diabetes. Age-appropriate resources can help students find the words to use so their diabetes can be a way to build relationships rather than a source of isolation. So I welcome everybody, if they want to, to get out their phones. I did include some QR codes. One of them links to the brochure that I have up here as an example. And then the other two are different areas. One of them actually addresses the food options at school and how to pick better choices. So they're actually real-life examples of how our students can choose to eat healthier. So the example informational flyer, it evolved from some research that was done by the diabetic team to answer the age-old question, why does my blood sugar go up sometimes, but I'm eating the exact same thing? So this flyer explains that blood sugar spikes when you eat things like french fries first. Sorry, I always think it's funny because kids always want their french fries. And I will say, that's one thing that we always try and encourage them to take a salad instead. But, so, they spike when they eat things like french fries. But if they were to eat a salad or vegetables prior to eating those french fries, their blood sugar and insulin levels remain much more stable. And I know it's small, but you can see in that, in those charts, the difference in just order makes. Interestingly, you're still eating the same amount of carbohydrates, but your blood sugar levels do not spike up like they would if you were to eat the fries first. This pictorial is just one that the team has designed so far and they have lots of ideas for further education. So our goal is to work with students utilizing microeducational opportunities like this to reinforce healthy lifestyle choices. I want to say our nurses advocate for safety all the time and they are so vested in making sure that everyone on our campus is safe. As many of you may be aware, NFL player Damar Hamlin had a sudden cardiac event recently while he's playing in the NFL. His life was actually saved by early access to an AED, or an Automatic External Defibrillator. And one of our nurses was so moved by his story that she contacted the David Heller Foundation, who has donated five portable AEDs for our high school athletics. I just want to express our deepest appreciations to the David Heller Foundation, unwavering support of athletics. Their commitment resonates with the spirit of unity and care that support our school community. It also allowed me to ask pertinent questions and we were actually able to get three more AEDs in our buildings at the beginning of this year. And we are always looking for AED donations. So if you are interested, you are free to reach out to me and/or anyone in Health Services to learn how to do that. I just want to say thank you for letting me talk tonight to the board members and Superintendent Boyd. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Winters. If you could stay at the podium for a moment. Are there any questions about the presentation?
Yeah.
First with the AEDs. How are you training people to use that? Or who gets trained?
We put specific staff members at each school through first aid and CPR training. And then, in the buildings themselves, the nurses review that specific machine with the staff there.
And then, at the beginning, you mentioned 56% of students were out of compliance and it's down to 1%?
Mm-hmm.
How did you do that?
I think we could all tell that.
I was going to say, Danielle.
We had the measles outbreak.
The compliance clerk Danielle is actually here. So I'm going to let her tell because it was really all of her hard work.
Hi Danielle.
Hello. What was the question? I'm sorry.
You went from 56% down to 1%, which is amazing in a relatively short period of time. How?
Five years. It's been my baby, pretty much. I started out January of 2018 and Holly showed me what the project was. And I started literally by going to the schools and sitting for hours on cold concrete floors, going through files of kids and entering them into Skyward, which was the first step was to make sure that all the information that we had was actually put into Skyward so that we could tell if they were compliant or not. After that, it was just a lot of education, educating the staff, the secretaries, the admin on, you know, what the laws are required for school entry. And exclusions was big. We had to, you know, we have to hold parents accountable and we have to do our due diligence and follow the laws. I know that students in chairs is a big, big thing, but we can't pick and choose which laws we get to follow. So we started excluding just three years ago. We have started, this year was a little crazy with the strike and a short amount of time to get everything ready. But I am optimistic that next year, we will be 100%. We have such a small, and that number of 200 is actually also including our students in transition and it includes the kids that are fosters that maybe we just don't have paperwork yet for. So if they are under the HART program, we do not exclude. We do give them a grace period and we work with them and their families on trying to get their immunizations or track down records, which is where our nurses have really stepped up. But a lot of it was just digging through files and I spend many hours a week scouring the database, the Washington State database, and making phone calls and the secretaries are sending letters home. It's been a big thing. The caravan this year was super exciting. I think they said, we saw, we had two mobile caravans here at district offices. We saw between the two of them, I want to say, close to 70 patients and over maybe 100, 160 vaccines were given. So for the first time out, it was really, really amazing. But really, it's just, it's a lot of background work. So, thank you. Thanks for letting me.
I would just, I would just like to say thank you because, well, for many reasons. But having most of us been on the board during the 2019 outbreak of the measles and this was a huge push because, I mean, I had a son in the daycare at Image and he wasn't quite old enough to get his second. But we, like, the pediatricians jumped on board and they were pushing early so we could get the kids back. So, I mean, we got to witness the tying commitments.
Just since I started in 2018, we've had a state audit, measles outbreak, and a pandemic. And then what was, there was something else. I don't even, but it's like every year has been something major along the way. So, oh, and yes, we're getting ready to switch to the School Module starting next year, which is a Department of Health thing that we're working on onboarding. But it has been fun and, like I said, it's my baby. I'm having a hard time letting it, letting it go, but I'm so super proud. So, oh, I did want to say that 200, if I take away the kids that are conditional and I... I remove the kids that are in the HART program, we're actually closer to like 86 kids district-wide that are out of compliance. So, I never thought we would see those numbers, ever. I celebrated when we hit 10,000. So, thank you.
Behind-the-scenes heroes.
It's sobering to hear 24% of our students have health conditions. I would expect that for older.
The first time I ran that report, I felt the same way. And that is, I mean, sometimes they're small things, right? Like, it could be this, that they have frequent headaches. Not that that's small, but it isn't, you know, like, it requires a physician order and a prescription for the Tylenol or, you know, headache medication that they're prescribed. It could be something that only happens occasionally, like eczema skin conditions, where they have to have special lotion at school. So, some of those conditions are not what we consider life-threatening, but they're still important, and we still touch every single one of them. Yeah.
And I might just ask, just as a board member, if there's a way we could get the presentation a little early, just, it's hard to take everything in on the spot.
I totally understand, yes.
Well, and to Gary's point about how many kids are 24%, I think that that's even more important, that you and the others are doing the advocacy work to make sure that we're doing some of the education pieces to help kids do some of that prevention.
Absolutely.
So thank you for that.
I wondered, I had a couple of questions, and one of them has to do with the 24%. Is that, is that inclusive of the mental and behavioral health problems?
Yes.
Okay, so that's all the health problems?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The other one was, with respect to the HART program, is that a county program working through community services, or is it something else?
I think that's.
That's ours, isn't it?
That's our program.
Okay. As soon as I said it, the picture of the logo came into my head.
Across the hallway, the sign.
Yeah.
Do you have collaborating structures with community services?
No, I just don't think it had been done regularly before this. We were trying to figure out how to help make sure that these students that are in transition get the vaccines they need. I mean, I feel like that's one of our most important demographics to work with. The, there's just, there's so many layers to it, but we just hadn't really gotten there yet. So we met with them first thing this year, and we're going to try and do better.
The context of my question has to do with my work with the Community Action Advisory Board and Community Services, because they know there are grant sources for helping those with housing situations. And closer work seems.
Okay.
Positive. If that committee can bring you resources, then we should. And the final question has to do with your flyer that you showed us. Is that advice that you're giving to kids with type 1 diabetes, I imagine?
It can be anybody, to be honest. They don't, no one, you wouldn't have to have diabetes.
That's the question.
Yeah, actually, any person on the planet should eat their vegetables and salad first, and then they can have all the other stuff. My grandmother was huge about always have your salad first. She always had a salad at every lunch and dinner. And I had no idea how important that would be until we read this book together. But really, it's anyone. It helps with insulin regulation and blood sugar spiking, helps curb that, you know, real big hunger that you get sometimes when it drops. So, yeah, it's everyone, truly.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions?
Just thank you for all your work. Kate and Danielle work right down the hallway from me, and I can tell you, they're the hardest working people you'd ever meet. And thank you to our nurses for all you do, too, because I know you guys are amazing and working on so many different fronts to help and support our students to be healthy. So, thank you, thank you.
Yes, it was hard to put it on to the presentation, to be honest.
Let me get it be, John. I think it'd be fruitful if we were to get a copy of the slides that she presented for our reference.
They're in our.
Are they in the board docs already? Huh. I should have looked. Then I apologize.
I didn't.
Mistake.
Sorry, I kept looking for them, but didn't see it.
Yeah, no, I've got them up.
All right, the next item on our agenda are matters reserved for board, matters reserved for board action. The first of that is our legislative priorities. This was a, what you have in front of you is a document, making it beautiful for use with advocacy. And thank you for putting that up on the screen. This represents the work that we've done in workshop, in prioritizing WASDA positions, and in our discussions about how the legislature could help us best in the next year. So what I want to do is open up a space here for a motion, either to adopt or something else.
I move to adopt the Evergreen Public Schools 2024 legislative priorities.
Second.
I've been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just wanted to ask a question on the first action step. It says, the second line, additional funding is necessary to support districts adopting OSPI's Inclusionary Practice Model. Is Evergreen, has Evergreen adopted that?
John?
Yeah, we have, we're engaging in the inclusive schools practices where, yeah, and so, the dollars associated with that add to the challenges that we have in funding, so.
I assumed we had, but.
Yeah.
Other comments?
My comment is that I think this is a, I mean, we haven't really had anything like this before, and I think it's extremely helpful as all of us get ready for this next legislative session and use it for talking points. I know that I had a sneak peek at it and was able to use some of the talking points. I think it aligns really well with some of the other talking points with the other agencies across the state. And I think as we go into the next session, it's important that we all have the same common language and the same voice, and so I would recommend that we adopt it.
And I will say, as we're leaning into the conversations about budget reductions, a lot of people are asking, what can I do? And this is a helpful document to share the kinds of action we need from our legislators to help bridge the gap with our budget, our budget issues. And as you can see, the very top bullet related to special education funding. So, that's a significant gap of $14 million that the board is not fully funding for us to support our students in special education. So, those are the types of, pardon me.
You said the board is not fully funding?
The state, excuse me, yeah. Excuse me, the state.
Okay. Is there any advice from our student representatives?
No, I think that this is great. I think that all of these things need extra funding, and looking over all of the data you guys have given me, I totally agree with all of this, and I'm excited for the day on the Hill, and I'm excited to get us some more money.
Thank you. I'm very, I'm thrilled. This is a document that aligns with WASDA's top priorities. And, as you know, last year, I took on a legislative advocacy role. I produced a dashboard for federal advocacy that we adapted to state advocacy that I've shown in workshops before. They've asked me to do that again, and the problem is really statewide. The underfunding of special education is a federal and a state-level disconnect with the actual costs. And we're going to be able to show that with graphs and data and stories. So I'm excited to continue that advocacy. Really just looking forward to it, and I appreciate the work done to make this visually clear. And it's great. Jackie, anything? Okay, the motion is to approve this document as the Board of Directors Legislative Priorities for 2024 Legislative Session. I'll go ahead with a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? My vote is aye. The next item on our agenda is titled December 5th School Closure Considerations for Cost Savings Workshop. This has referenced the workshop we held last Tuesday about that. John?
Yes, so, as Jennifer Jacobson, Chief Financial Officer, is up here, too, we'll tag-team this a little bit. So, for those folks in the audience that may not have been part of the discussion, we have, we held a discussion with the board in workshop to discuss the possibility of school closures as a cost-saving measure related to the budget. And so, as that, the board directed me to do so, and we had that conversation. And today, what we'd like to do is to spend a little bit of time giving the board an opportunity to discuss that and make a, make a motion to direct us in the way that you think is appropriate under the circumstances based on that conversation.
Thank you. Jennifer Jacobson, any comments?
I just wanted to give you the opportunity to ask any questions. We shared a lot of information last Tuesday, and so if you've had some time to think about it, if you have any questions, I'm here and available for that.
Are there any questions for Jennifer?
Yeah, I know I had asked for, kind of like, you know, we got the list of when the schools were built, but like, what their value may be as of now?
Yes.
And any construction that's going to be needed in the near future might help us determine, at least money-wise, you know, what would be the appropriate course of action.
Absolutely. So we do have that data. We need to kind of compile it, but I know that our Senior Director of Facilities is putting together a building. What's it called? Building assessment.
Yeah, essentially a building assessment. So, apart, because we have our upcoming building condition assessments, and so with that, that'll go into our asset preservation program that we then have to present in March, I believe, and get it submitted to OSPI by April. So it's going to be a combination of taking that data plus everything we already have, plus all the improvements we have completed through the bond, and just kind of getting it compiled and concise for y'all to review.
And to that point, I think that during our conversation last Tuesday, a lot of that was discussed, like, because making decisions like this are never easy considerations. There's a lot of factors that go into it. And really, we were presented with kind of some of where we're at and what our options are. Obviously, there's some options that are on the board that we discussed at length at the meeting on Tuesday. And so I think in order for this board really to make a decision or even how to move forward, I think we would need to consider all of that information. And so we would need a lot more information so we can make an information or decision that really involves our stakeholders and that we have all the information about our current buildings and all the other considerations, because I think we have a list of considerations, too, that we should think through before we make any formalized decision. But I, with that, I think I would suggest that we really, after this year, after we make all of our budget decisions for the 24, 25 school year, that we really ask the superintendent to give us kind of a two- to three-year timeline that includes all of the information that this board will need, including community, stakeholder feedback, all of the conditions of the building, all of the other things that we really discussed in that meeting last Tuesday, and then see what a timeline would look for, like a two- to three-year process.
Any other questions for them? Hearing none. Action on this will require a motion.
Okay, so I'll make the motion that I move that after the 2024, 25 budget reductions complete, we revisit the school closure conversation and direct the superintendent to provide a written and oral report that includes timelines for a two-year and three-year process.
Second.
Moved in second, and, let me see the, so the motion is that after the 2024, 25 budget reduction is complete, we revisit the school closure conversation and direct the superintendent to provide a written and oral report that includes timelines for a two-year and three-year process. Is that your motion?
It is.
Is there any discussion?
I like the idea of both a two-year and a three-year, not a two-to-three-year, so it kind of would get us more, you know, defined.
And we're going to get all that information in the spring from the state survey, correct?
Yeah, so in addition, just to reemphasize, so in addition, I mean, there's multiple things happening, right? So we'll be updating our capital facilities plan as well, and a part of that is an updated enrollment forecast, which is also going to play into all of that data as well.
Yeah, I remember you guys letting us know that it was going to take a while, but the minutes didn't show that, so it's good to discuss it here, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and when we were attending that, that meeting, it really just became clear that without the data and without the community input, this could not be, this couldn't be a process the public could accept, in my opinion. And so I'm, having been told about the timelines and the, I guess, the necessity to wait and let folks process, that's really important to me. And so I agree with the, with the motion that we do this over two to three years and that we keep an eye on conditions as they change.
And I think to Director Wilson's point, it would be just fine to do a two and a three-year and look at it from different perspectives. And it might be something that we bring to the board and we tune over time as we get more information, as we do our study and surveys, we understand our enrollment demographics, as we see how the legislature comes in, and after we get through the budget process, we can provide information, we can work with board leadership to decide exactly on the next steps and continue the conversation with the board.
Yeah, I mean, when we consider all three options, I think that all of us, you know, when we, in that conversation, when we were having the discussion, that really, A, was really a fast timeline that really makes us make decisions before we have all of the information. And that's why, for me, if we get the two-to-three-year timeline and that that process looks like, we can really make some informed decisions.
Yeah, and these, these three options were not intended to be the only options. They were just intended to give the board some way to direct and think about the issue of closing schools and various possibilities. So there may be other possibilities that, as we go through the process, that are brought up, thought about, and implemented as well.
Yeah, because financial isn't the only, you know, reason to close a school. It could be, you know, if there's three schools closely together, and it might make sense in that case to maybe close one.
Well, it also takes a process with our boundary, except, or our boundary changes, and I want to also make sure that we stick to our policy on how we do that as well. So once that's decided, we then have, I think it's a, it's quite a long process.
I think that would have to be a consideration as we're doing this.
Yeah.
Agreed. As moved, we have a board opportunity then to revisit the school closure conversation and the direction to the superintendent to provide that report. John, do you think that would come May and June, after all the data is gathered, or will there be updates between now and then on how the work's progressing with that?
Well, I think that we could certainly provide information to the board after we get the study and survey. I think that will be a big, important piece in the demographic study and give us a chance to process that. So that could, I would, I would say June, July, maybe, could be.
The final timeline.
Could be a reasonable timeline and give us until August to really finalize, but we can bring preliminary things to the board as we learn them. You'll have a chance to hear Nicole talk about the study and survey, the demographic report, so we don't have to limit ourselves to that one time to discuss it. And that can be something in board leadership that we talk about, and how you want to bring it forth on a regular basis to have a conversation where we can be flexible around.
Thank you.
I'd probably suggest earlier than that, but whatever we can do.
I think the motion was after the considerations of the budget.
After the budget reduction decisions, yeah, which is, I'm sure if, as the preliminary data comes in, that it can go into the Friday report.
Yeah, we can start reviewing all of the information as we get it, but really to ask for staff to give us that timeline, and because then we'll know exactly what we're dealing with from, because part of it, too, is what funding we get from legislature after the session, so that, you know, depending on that, it could make some, change some of our decisions we make moving forward.
Well, in preparing for the conversation with the board, we've talked, Jennifer Jacobson has consulted with several districts that are going through the process. We've already got a good body of information and can. got a good body of information and can draft up timelines pretty, not, not, not too difficult. It wouldn't be too difficult to draft up timelines to bring to the board. So we should be able to hit those timelines.
I also think it's important for the public to hear us say, "We have not selected schools at this point in time. We've not selected schools. We have not decided on anything." And that we intend to involve the community and all stakeholders in a collaborative process. Part of why it's going to be in a two-to-three-year process is to make sure that all the voices are heard. I'm particularly interested in student voices on this matter and, and on family voices. And I just appreciate the openness so far when discussing the process. I think it will get a better result that way. Are there any other comments? Any advice from student representatives?
I just, I think it's heartbreaking, the idea of having to shut down a school for the whole community as a district, the micro-community of the school or schools we would have to shut down. But I think it could be a really necessary thing. And, you know, shutting down a school versus having librarians or whatever is, you know, a hard decision to make. But that's kind of what we have to do up here, is make really hard decisions based on what is best for our community. So I'm really faithful that we will make the best decision for everybody. And I'm thankful that we have the tools to make those decisions.
Thank you, Sullivan. I appreciate you bringing in the fact of the heartbreak. It's, it's going to be difficult. If there are no other comments, I'll take a vote on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
My vote is aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is the Good News Report. John? Craig?
Good evening, School Board. Superintendent Boyd, Sullivan, our student rep. I'm going to start off with, we had a little bit of delay to the Mill Plain ribbon cutting ceremony. The original date was canceled. So we, you know, we had it recently, and it was as wonderful as we could have wanted. It really went great. Student speeches were fantastic. As you could see from the faces there and the cutting of the ribbon. I know the board wasn't there because you were at the WASDA meeting, so I wanted to share this with you. Dr. Armstrong was there and really got the kids chanting and alive. It was a really, really special day for them. We have video and pictures if people want to, you know, see the ceremony. Cascade Middle School just last week, I went over there right before our board meeting. They had their culture fair. The theme of the fair was a celebration of winter traditions and desserts from the many cultures that represent the school. So what they had is students, staff, and families. They made desserts to represent their culture, and I didn't eat any, but they looked delicious. A lot of student leadership went into organizing this event. They also had craft sent, craft stations as well, and even a photo booth. So a great event at Cascade. We previously talked a little bit about Pioneer's Hope Program, which is helping others pursue excellence. We did a video story on it, just got to talk to the kids about how this overall theme at the school is really impacting them. And the whole theme is helping others. And it's as simple as opening doors for people and then also working together. I was there on this day where fifth graders and kindergartners worked together to make an art project to send out to a member of the EPS community that was going through a tough time. The kids didn't even know who the person was, but they knew that the, that family needed support. So the fifth graders and kindergartners worked together to create this art. Another thing is they planted, another collaboration of grades, planted tulips out in their, on their ground, so they'll see that grow. But teachers and staff and families have just talked about how this overall theme of helping others in every way. And you can hear the kids say, "Why do you like helping someone?" And it's just because we, and they say things like, it makes their day better. So really enjoyable. Evergreen High School had their first-ever dig day. This is a great event on November 30th, thanks to our partners with Tapany Construction and CNE Rentals. You could see from the pictures, this was a real hands-on learning experience. Those are our students in those construction vehicles. I will start with no injuries, so that's the good news. Everything went great. The weather was true Portland Northwest weather, so the students got to really learn what it's like to work in the conditions. But they had stations inside and outside the Skilled Trade Center. And Tapany Construction workers helped, showed them how to use the equipment. Students were able to ask questions about construction as a career. And these are skills that they're already learning in their program with the CTE program. So they're working in the Skilled Trade Center, doing geometry and construction classes. So about 150 students got to take part in this. And then finally, you guys were here, almost everybody here for the Evergreen Awards from last week. So some pictures from that. But that's it, unless there's any questions. Awesome. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Craig. The next item on our agenda is an information item. We are receiving the financial statement for the month of October. And those documents, or that document, is present in the board docs under this agenda item. No action is required. Our next item is Student Board Representative Report. We'll turn the time here over to Sullivan Taylor.
Hi. So today, right before our meeting, we had our first Student Board Advisory Council meeting. I got to meet all of the great people that we chose to be in this committee. We talked about the values that we all shared, the needs of each individual person, and how we can create an environment where we feel safe and respected so that we can talk about all of the things that we're struggling with in school. We talked a little bit about what an ideal school, school day looks like to us. And we planned our next meeting. We're going to talk about our feelings about budget cuts and kind of wrap up our ideas and present them to the board soon. And a couple weeks ago now, we went to the WASDA conference. Covenant and I both went. We had a really great time. We met so many just phenomenal Student Board representatives from all across the states, or the state, from smaller schools to Seattle Public Schools and just humongous schools. And we learned so much. We have a huge group chat. It's still fruitful, and we're sending each other forms and things. And we're all helping each other out and bouncing ideas back and forth. And we learned so much, and we're really thankful for the opportunity to have gone to Bellevue and learn all of these great things. So I'm, from Covenant and I, we're both very thankful for the opportunity. And that is my update.
Thank you, Sullivan. The next item on our agenda is Board Comments. We'll open that up for comments by any board member.
I want to go first. I was actually in that meeting with Sullivan, with the students, and it was pretty phenomenal. These students are amazing. And I asked them, I told them, "We want them to be as honest with us as possible, because what we're looking for is information that we, we're never going to get because we're not in it every day with them." And just listening to them sort of brainstorm and make connections with each other, it was just, it was pretty cool. And it's a great group of kids, and I can't wait for you guys to meet them because they're going to come to a meeting soon and, you know, share with us. So thank you. And thank you to Sullivan and Covenant for sort of paving the way for this. They've done a lot of the groundwork. They've been here with us for a year, and this is their second year. I'm sad that you will be graduating. We won't be able to keep you on, but you've done a lot of good leadership, so thank you.
Other comments?
Yeah, I'd just want to thank the voters of the Evergreen School District for their faith in me to bring a new perspective and a voice for change. I know it can be frustrating repeatedly coming to school board meetings and sharing your heart during public comments and not seeing immediate change. So, yeah, and, you know, I thought Adam tonight had an interesting comment, and it got me thinking. You know, as we're looking at, you know, down the road, two, three years, the possibility of closing a school or two, you know, he mentioned, you know, the, this building would be very, probably more marketable than a 50-year-old elementary school, so he might consider looking at those options as well. But also, Megan had brought up some interesting comments, too, and I'm very interested in hearing from the group assembled as a result of the September 12th board meeting, after almost a dozen public board comments at night highlighted corroborated widespread ongoing student behavioral problems causing student and teacher trauma and widespread learning loss. You know, like she was mentioning tonight, you know, there has to be consequences for these repeated behaviors. So I'm looking forward to hearing back from, from that group. And I also want to retract a portion of my public comment from October 24th concerning Superintendent Boyd and his quote in the front page of The Columbian, that article on October 21st. John shared recently that although the quote may have been accurate, it was misapplied to that portion of the article concerning academic scores. And I should have considered the source. So, and lastly, I just want to wish everyone a safe and merry Christmas, or whatever. Season's greetings you might share, shalom. But thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for, thank you, Sullivan, for coming to the conference with us. It's, it's the culmination of and the beginning of something that I'd long wanted to see, is are students involved at the highest, at every level of governance and administration in, in the district. And that's the beginning, is that the advice we get from these board rep, or the Student Advisory Council, I believe it'll be a game-changer. And I'm so looking forward to having that mechanism of feedback coming back to the board so that we can make better decisions. Appreciate that. That's all I had. Are there any other comments? Hearing none. The board will go into a recess where we'll sign the documents to make the action we took official. And then we will reconvene in a board workshop to discuss and debrief the fall school improvement presentations and the Washington State School Directors Association Conference that we were just now talking about. Thank you for coming.